A motion, are there any additions or changes to the agenda first of all, sorry. If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion made second to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Is anyone that wishes to address the council, public comment? None, okay, we'll move on. You have the consent agenda in front of you of, or of, yeah, should just mention, I don't know if you've had a chance to play with the new format for the agendas that, uh, it's gonna save Luanne a lot of work going down the road here, so I guess, uh, we'll see how some work goes through the meeting here. Four dot one approval of minutes for January twenty fifth, twenty sixteen, regular council meeting, four dot two approval of minutes for the January twenty fifth, twenty sixteen work session meeting, four dot three approval of minutes for the June twenty third, twenty fifteen EDA meeting, four dot four approval of claims for the month of January, four dot five approval of check summary for the month of January, four dot six approval of resolution two eight sixteen seven, the lawful gambling exemption for West Carver Ducks Unlimited, four dot seven approval of billing permit report for month ending January twenty sixteen, four dot eight approval of fire department report for the month ending January twenty sixteen, and four dot nine approval of liquor licenses for twenty sixteen. Any others need to be pulled up for further discussion or anything? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? The motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff is proposing to purchase new Christmas decorations. Many of the companies are offering discounts on the Christmas decorations at this time of the year, so staff's recommending that the city purchase eight three foot star snowflakes at a cost of two hundred and twenty dollars each, or a total of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. These would be intermingled with our, um, with the wreaths, and we, if there's any wreaths that we would wanna take off, then we'd take those out. Um, also the replacement of sixteen flag banners and the sixteen Christmas banners for a total of one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. So the total to the city, or the cost, would be three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. There is two thousand dollars in the beautification line item in the park fund. The balance of the funds could come from, um, the community center capital outlay, so staff is requesting approval to purchase the Christmas decorations and the new banners, and direction on where the funds should be expended from. So you can see what the banners, what they look like if those.
These are Christmas banners.
Are, are, um, and those would be the flag ones. They're actually starting the, um, they're getting, so that they're ra- unraveling the Christmas ones are, cause they're canvas. The new ones now are vinyl, so they seem like they last a lot longer, or they seem to hold up a little bit better, and our flag ones are also, um, canvas material. And then these are.
Are what?
They're canvas, they have a little bit of canvas, but like the ones that we've got with the, um.
Business names.
Are vinyl.
And they're still staying up?
Yes, yes, absolutely. But the flag ones are starting to tear, you notice, so, um, anyway, and then the, the Christmas, uh, the snowflake is the one in the corner that's got the yellow around it.
So that's a banner as well?
Excuse me?
It's a banner as well, or is it just a black background?
It's a light, it's a light, it's a light, it's a lit up ornament.
Looks like the one on the left.
So it looks like what's on the pole.
Yeah.
Yes, here, yeah, it's got, it says forty-eight LED bulbs.
Yep.
I'd like it if it was a little banner that lit up. I don't know if you're gonna be able to see me.
I don't know if you can even, if you can get banners, something like that, but, anyway, and then.
How, how big are these snowflakes, does it say?
It's a snowflake, three and a half, the three and a half.
Three and a half feet, okay.
We, we purchased them the same size as our wreaths, so that they won't be bigger than the wreaths that are up, so they'll be on the same side.
Okay.
Um, this does include some new brackets too, on, that are in here, so if you looked at the sales order from Northern Lights, there's three new brackets that are needed too. And they're from two different companies, we're purchasing the, um, the, uh, snowflakes from display sales and the banners from, um, Northern Lights Display, so, um.
Okay.
We were able to find a really good deal, I mean, the banner prices are actually forty-one dollars for each, forty-two dollars, which we thought was very, very reasonable.
So you're going every other pole with the snowflake, and then the wreath that we have left?
We'll work them in somehow, yeah, we'll let Kyle figure out, we'll figure out where we wanna put them on the pole. If we get eight of them, there's, there's like, you know, there's twenty-five poles or whatever, we'll have to put four, we'll do four down one side and four down the other side, is what we'll do. And mix them in, so that they're not, so that they have some order to them.
Mhm. Um, are they mounted on the same kinda brackets that we already have?
We don't, we're not sure of that, we need to find out for sure, I'm, I'm sure they're different brackets.
Look like it.
Mhm, and I think the bracket must come with, with the light, because she didn't, there was no cost for the brackets, so I will double check on that to be sure. When I told her we wanted four or eight of them, she sent the price list, um, and they're two hundred and twenty dollars, and I'm just assuming that they're the brackets.
So now, the last time we did banners, the EDA kinda got involved.
The EDA got involved because we put business names on it, and we asked the business owners to pay for them.
They paid like fifty bucks, didn't they?
No, I think they paid a hundred and twenty, they paid for the whole thing, the banner.
Okay.
And so.
And those are summertime banners?
Right.
That'll be mixed with the flag banners.
Because we don't put flags up, but we thought these would be nice to have, something with flags on them.
So these, these will be up year round, are you saying?
Well, they go up, except for when Christmas comes up, decorations, then they used to come down.
Right, but I mean, otherwise they're up, I mean, say, it's not just for fourth of July or anything like that, okay.
No, no, they'll go up, he'll probably put them up sometime March or April, and they'll stay up till November.
Yep.
Until he puts up Christmas decorations and banners, and then these will replace. So the banners that we have right now, the Christmas tree ones, are actually smaller than the, the flag ones that we have, so we made sure that we ordered them all the same size, so he doesn't have to be changing the bracket size too on the poles. So this will help him be able to do that too, because the other ones are smaller, the Christmas tree ones are a little bit smaller.
The reason for the snowman, so that you can leave it up all winter, not have to take them down and they'll add colors during the winter.
Mhm.
So they can stay up through January, February.
Oh, March, maybe.
Yep, if you want.
So I'm ears to a mate.
On, uh, snowflakes.
Yep.
Says they're made of, uh, heavy duty steel construction with the corrosion resistance, is there any warranty on those?
I imagine that there probably is.
At least I can check on them and find out what it is.
You know, just being on a state highway and all the salt in the air. They tend to get pretty rusty.
Like a lot of cities have, this is a real common, um, decoration that cities have.
Okay, any other questions for Luanne?
Is, are they from, the snowflakes, are they from the display sales?
They are from.
Yep.
No, yes, display sales or the snowflakes from Northern Lights.
It says no, no warranty coverage for airborne, road salt, and or other corrosive.
Didn't see that.
Under term of emission.
Did you, where'd you find that, Eric?
Under the ad.
Oh, at the bottom.
On the bottom of this?
Page twenty-six.
But then it says on the display sales on the next sheet, it's, it's got the warranty. Five seasons for protection on steel frames and pole installation hardware, three seasons on decoration components.
Includes easy to install mounting hardware, includes, so all that.
So it says damage, and then it says not covered by warranty on the next page too, Jerry, so I'm partway through.
I don't think you've got that on the one that was attached to the.
Says damage or rust caused by ice load, airborne, road salt, and any other process.
No, for the next page.
Bulb breakers, burnout, and color.
No, it's, it's not on the one attached to the, to the agenda.
Did I not put this one in there? I didn't.
The Google Docs one.
I didn't, this one.
Yeah, okay, so that's not on the Google Docs one, okay. Well, yeah, that's, but, uh, I think if you take them down, I don't know, if, I think even if you were to hose them off a little bit to, to the rust, salt to the same all year round, is there a way from? Not way too, and, um, regardless, what you put up there, I have some damage from the corrosion, that's not gonna, that's, that's in don't plow twenty-five, I guess that's in the other, obviously don't put salt on it, which would not be there either.
And these were forty, there were two fifty-nine on here, if you look, and she, she priced them at two twenty-four.
Um, in that community center capital outlay, is there a lot of money in there?
Fifteen thousand dollars in there, I believe.
And did we have plans for that?
Well, we were gonna do something with the kitchen covers, I thought, and we need to do the drains in the kitchen, they need to be replaced. Um, Tom's giving me a price on that right now, so.
My only thought is, is that the two thousand dollars that's in the park board budget for beautification, usually some of that money needs to be spent in, on planters, and I thought they were gonna get more planters, or do something with those trees that we have. So if you spend all that, then they have to come up with money somewhere else to do the planters and do this summer thing.
How much money does the park board have in its account right now?
Isn't that two twenty-five?
Yep.
Oh, two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Should be aligned. So many air purification things for planters.
You need to split between several different funds, and use three funds to, yeah, or one to.
I mean, if you wanna direct me where you want it to come from, if you want a third to come from three different places, then you tell me where you want it to come from, and that's what we'll do.
So you could go streets, park ward, and community center.
Do that, general government, yeah. And then split three ways between those three?
I think so.
Okay.
That would work.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the banners and the stars, or snowflakes, banners and snowflakes?
Kinda sounds like I made a motion, so I guess I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second too.
The motion made second to approve the purchase of the, uh, snowflakes and banners as presented, with the cost being divided up between the three different departments, streets, park, and community center. Any further discussion or questions?
What was the total? Three thousand five hundred and something, was it?
Thirty-five seventy-three.
Thirty-five seventy-three, alright.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, purchase of computers for city hall.
Mr. Mayor, council members, if you recall, last year we had budgeted also for, um, computers for city hall, however, we chose to put in the wifi instead. So the city only budgeted two thousand dollars for new computers for twenty sixteen. Staff has solicited the attached quote in the amount of three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents from Stutzman Technology. The quote is for four computers, one monitor, because we're gonna use some of the monitors we still have, crucial ballistic sport eight gigabytes, and the city will use Microsoft Office two thousand seven that we currently have on the system, we'll just, we can reload it onto the, the new computers. Again, the city did only budget two thousand for new computers, however, there's two thousand twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents left over from the twenty fifteen budget in the computer line item that could be used for this purchase also. So staff's requesting approval of the computer purchase in the amount of three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents, using the funds from this year and then part of the leftover funds from last year, and I, that was in your packet too.
Microsoft even supporting oh seven, oh seven anymore?
Probably not, but.
But it worked.
It worked, um, you could, we could go to twenty ten, which is a, I mean, at least was twenty fifteen or stuff like that, um, I've used twenty thirteen, I'm not really happy with that, so I'm back to twenty seven, I might have only now too.
I mean, I would propose we load to two thousand seven, and if we wanna budget for it in twenty seventeen for a new software program, then we budget for it in seventeen, so that we aren't going over.
Yeah, we could, we could use that, I mean, two thousand seven works fine yet, so.
Or the four computers, Laura Lewis has one, you have one.
One for the new person that we will hire, and one for Kyle.
Okay. So the sheriff's department have a computer, or do they share with Kyle?
They have their own computer.
So the computer that Kyle just got, the laptop?
Yeah, he uses that for operations of his water plant, waste water plant, and it's not a laptop, it's a, um, iPad.
Mhm.
I know he's having issues with his computer too, so.
And then that, uh, leftover two thousand twenty-seven or whatever, what, where does that get transferred to, does that just go into the capital outlay?
You put it into the nine thirty-five, in that four thirty-five.
What, thirty-five?
That nine mil, nine hundred and seven thousand dollars, it's transferred into there.
Okay.
We keep so much in the general fund, because we have to, or the state attorney recommends that we keep up thirty to thirty-five percent, so then the balance gets transferred to that other fund, that four thirty-five fund.
Cold, are you guys just confused?
No. I think the last time was.
Two thousand seven?
I think it was. I think it was, well, I think we've had one upgrade since then. And we bought a couple of monitors, because monitors were a lot.
These are twenty inch monitors?
Only one, we're only buying one.
Oh, just one, okay.
We're buying one monitor, because we're gonna use for the, yeah.
Okay, any other questions, any other comments? If not, is there a motion to approve this purchase of the new computers and monitor and memory for him?
I'll make that motion.
One second, then.
The motion made second to approve the purchase of the computers and monitors and memory as stipulated, um, I think makes a lot, just my comment, I don't think so, makes a whole lot of difference in the total price. Uh, he's got listed as eight gigs per computer, I'm not sure you need eight gigs per computer, but.
Okay.
What do you think, Eric?
I don't know, just working, using office and like.
For office and stuff, no, I mean, I've got eight gigs for, for Photoshop, but that's a little different for video stuff, but if you're just doing office, I think four gigs is, especially with, with Windows ten, that runs a little clean, a little leaner anyhow, so, that'll cut your.
So what are you suggesting, Jerry, that we just go to four gigabyte?
Four gigs, the way I read this, it, he's pricing that eight gigs per computer, I think.
So you think he's adding that extra RAM memory?
Yeah.
Four, four gigs.
We only wanna put four on each one, instead of eight.
Just four, four gigs, I, um.
I just don't know how much that Banyan program takes, like the utility building too.
Maybe you can still check with him.
Right, that could be why too.
Well, is the amount for that just another hundred and forty-four dollars, am I reading that right?
Yep.
Well, it's actually just, it'll save us seventy-two dollars, it saves half of that forty-four, forty-four.
All the cushions.
So that, I'm not sure it's worth, worth the, the difference there.
I don't think it is.
So.
You know they're gonna talk to the other equipment that we have, the printers, the, it's an HP, so they should.
He definitely wears all of our stuff, so he knows, he came in and asked us what we want.
That's okay, okay, then I guess, uh, go ahead with, any other questions, any motion, okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving forward here, we have the approval energy analysis with CenterPoint Energy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, CenterPoint Energy is promoting an energy analysis program for their customers. The cost to complete the audit is two hundred dollars for two accounts, and fifty dollars for two accounts, for a total of the city of five hundred dollars. I guess it's based on the amount of, um, usage, or the, the BTUs that we use in the building. Staff is requesting council input on whether the energy analysis should be completed. The information that will be provided may require that funds be spent to repair or upgrade buildings. There are also rebates and other programs offered from CenterPoint to offset the cost improvement, however, improvements have to be completed in twenty sixteen. City staff did contact CenterPoint Energy and found out that the energy analysis could be used next year for applications to rebate programs. So if the city wanted to complete the audit, and then budget for the larger items that we may get in twenty seventeen, you would, they would, we would still qualify for the rebate programs that CenterPoint has available. And if they come in and tell us that we need to replace all the windows, I mean, I didn't wanna go ahead and do this analysis if, why spend money if we weren't gonna spend, you know, do the upgrades or whatever needs to be done? So that's why I brought it here, because there's gotta be a commitment if there's a huge expense, or if you're gonna spend this and don't wanna spend the other money, I guess that's why I'm coming.
Tell them that we can replace the windows. That's pretty cool, yeah.
They're big block, old buildings with lots of space, and I don't know, what are their analysis?
I'd, I'd replace windows before I'd replace cupboards.
Well, so, but anyway, and so then I was concerned that if we didn't complete it by the end of the year, we've not budgeted for it, but yet again, like I said, I contacted them, and the rebate programs would apply for next year with this energy analysis due. So if you wanna do it, just to have it as for information for the twenty seventeen budget, and maybe it, it won't, you know, maybe it's just weather stripping windows that would be reasonable or something too, I, but they will tell us.
Will they have rebate programs in twenty seventeen that we can take advantage of?
They said, well, they said that they would, and I think they have to, because of the, um, conservation improvement program that the state, the legislature requires utilities to do, where they have to return so much money for conservation and improvement. I, I think they have to dedicate so many funds for that. So it's, it's five hundred dollars if you wanna do it.
We could go get the FLIR from the fire department, and we can see where all the, he's going out the windows too, and check for one hundred dollars, but.
Okay.
The FLIR, so he jumps in and down with the youth. We have a few of those.
I figured ourselves with that thing, so.
Yeah, we already know half of it, it's the windows.
You know, I think it's a good idea to do these energy audits, but to be locked in and committed to replacing stuff, I mean, you go through the wastewater facility and the treatment plant, there's a lot of motors that consume electricity, and even though a lot of them are probably high efficiency motors, if they find a few that aren't high efficiency, it could get pretty expensive.
Well, we're not, we're not locked in to replace them, it's just we would, we could budget for it in twenty seventeen for as much as we wanted to.
So if they find, we wouldn't have to replace them within two years?
Only to get the rebate program.
Only to get the rebate.
Only to get the rebate, okay.
Only to get the rebate program.
Yeah.
Okay, well then, you know, I think it's a good idea, because look at the money that Hoover saved us with the blowers, by putting them on VFDs. You know, if there's other stuff out there that's available, that might save us some money on some of that.
Well.
I think it'd be worth it.
If nothing else, it's gonna help us prioritize what we need to do.
Mhm.
I mean, like some has been saying windows, so, which is probably true, and which is gonna be, would be huge cost savings down the road. So, okay, so is there a motion to approve this, uh, the energy audit then, that costs a five hundred dollars to the city? Is there a second? Motion made second to approve the energy audit, CenterPoint Energy audit, any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, um, hey.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city council had discussed this ordinance, ordinance two oh seven, which was a text amendment on, at the work session on January twenty fifth, twenty sixteen. And this, um, ordinance was to change some of the landscaping requirements in the C one, C two, CI, and PI institutional districts. Council has requested it be placed on the next agenda for consideration, so staff's requesting action on ordinance two oh seven, tree and landscaping requirements for the C one, general commerce, C two, central business, CI, commercial industrial, and PI, public institutional, um, districts. So either a approach, a motion approving or denying the ordinance would be in order.
So the change is that, are the strikeouts that later on here, those are changes?
Yes.
So here, that, uh, the overstorey tree, the foundation planting, those are things that are changed.
They're gonna be gone, yeah.
Okay.
Don, being on the planning commission and living back there, I mean, you, what, any thoughts about it?
Well, I think the consensus was that the ordinance the way it was, there was too many trees, there was too much of a financial burden on the, uh, landowners to, for trees, and then they added maintenance, I think, for years. All the trees were whatnot, and, uh, so they decided to get back on some of the trees. Now, I wasn't at the work session to see if you, you would tweak that a little more, I don't know, if you guys did there. But, that, you know, I, I feel that should have some kind of re-leaf on the property, at least on the street side. You know, maybe it was too much to give them.
Well, the street side looks like it still stays, one overstorey tree for every thirty feet of front, street frontage, so that's still there. The, the front, the frontage is still there, that's still stays, one, one every thirty feet.
Foundation planting.
That's our meaning, yeah.
The big foundation planting. What's the biggest single?
Is that because there's very, there's maybe only one business that has foundation planting?
Right.
I don't, that wasn't, that's still in here, the foundation planning.
Most of them start.
That's just spunk out.
Page thirty-nine, uh, here, five.
I mean, you, you also have the option of sending it back to the planning commission, direction on what you want.
R three, that's for the R three.
You have to come up with something else if you wanted to.
Is it gonna, does the planning commission wanna talk about it again or not?
Well, we'll talk about it.
You need to talk about it, I guess.
You need to talk about it again.
I mean, I guess if, since the foundation plantings were eliminated, you could send it back to them and ask them that you don't want them completely eliminated, but to come up with some kind of a compromise in between, if that's what you want, or you can just decide what it is yourself and be finished with it.
Not eliminate it completely, just cut back some more.
Guess I could see approving it if we put C back in, there's some foundation plantings on the front side of the building. You know, that would be removing the trees along the sides and the rear lots.
But then where do we go if, uh, if a business owner comes and says he wants to put, uh, his, uh, parking, you know, sidewalk, sidewalk right up to the building, and parking, so you park right next to sidewalks, so, we use it cleaning in snow or stuff like that, where are we gonna do that, so, then we're back granting our variance or something like that, we're not granting from exception, except, exception to the rules here.
As much as I would like to see some prettiness at times, if I'm gonna sacrifice, if I've sacrificed, sacrificed anyhow, I'll sacrifice the prettiness for jobs in town.
Yeah, I, I agree.
You know, if I could get a couple of jobs in town where people can have a job right here. You know, if I could get a couple of jobs in town where people can have a job right here, I'll, I'll take that over a, a shrub any day.
I mean, it's, it's an industrial area and they.
Yeah, hopefully they could buy outside town and plant their shrubs in their, in their residential lot, clarify that.
Yeah, I guess, uh, the foundation plannings, one every ten feet on a hundred foot building, that's ten plants. It's pretty minimal, you know, and we're.
Just frontage.
Yeah, just the frontage.
And nobody else has it there.
No.
So you're gonna make the new people do it and the new people that don't have it.
I think the cabinet shop out there has it, and I think the.
Botanize does, I think.
Botanize, expert. That big warehouse has it, the first building.
Brad probably does.
So I, I think a lot of them have it. I think the exceptions that were made in the past were around the edges of the property.
Oh, this will send it back to the planning commission.
I, I make a motion that we accept the changes recommended by the planning commission.
Okay. Is there a second? I will second it. Okay, we have motion and a second to accept the changes made by, made the, changes made by the planning commission. Any further discussion, we've had some discussion?
So the old one said one foundation planning for every ten feet of street facing building frontage. And are there any of them that face the street that are, have the wide end of their building facing the street? Don't you typically put like, maybe up the forty foot front, that's four plants?
Correct. The, the unit out there behind Don's runs parallel to the street.
The long one?
The long way. And there are plants in front of that one. The storage lockers on the other side kind of parallel the street. And there are plants in that one.
The condos, business condos, are those plants maybe in the right away though, instead of in the building, in front of the building? I think, 'cause I once got one there and I don't remember them shoveling or all the plants.
Yeah, I think.
I think you're right, I think they're in the right of way. They're in the right of way.
Right.
They're, they're in the right of way.
At business condo, it's, they don't have anything by the building.
They don't have anything, there is no room, you put a plant next to the building.
That's what looks pretty much on the right of way.
Well, right, and maybe that would be a non-compromise.
Laundry right of way, I can.
Probably not.
I don't know, the whole controversy about he take, he's gonna take their, the whole large tree. All right, that was my question, I don't.
Okay, um, any other discussions or to call the motion? You know, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Sounds like two, two.
Yeah, sounds like that.
Uh, with that then, we'll send it back to the planning commission for. You've heard our discussion, now you come up with something. Some good proposal.
A comp.
A compromise, yeah, okay. Okay, uh, next item, five dot five, approval date of interview for deputy clerk to interview questions.
Mr. Mayor Councilmember, staff's requesting council direction on the interview process for the deputy clerk position. The city advertised for the position and has received ten applications. I have made copies of those and provided them to all of you tonight. I'm requesting that the personnel committee or the city council meet to discuss the applications and select applicants for interviews. So, I, as I was thinking about this, maybe you want to take them home, review them, send me your three top choices, and then we'll set a date tonight to do the interviews for February twenty ninth at six thirty, which is an extra Monday. Um, and then on the interview questions, if you want to all let me know which one, which ones you wanted to use, or if you thought some, which you had those in your packet, if you thought there was a better set, I can have those ready for you at your desk for each person when, as we've done in the past, when we do the interviews.
Okay, so we got, we got a couple of things there, so first of all. We're, we're gonna be going.
Make your choices.
Going through these applications on our own, rating them, emailing Luanne with our, how many do you want?
I think, I think, I think you're, yeah, and I think once you do them, you're gonna find that there's, there's like top three. So there's your rate and rank them, and I gave you that rate and ranking sheet, but like I said, feel free to, to change if there's, one of the headings you want to change, just be fair with everyone, so everyone.
What are they going, one to ten?
What's that?
Is it one to ten, one to five?
However you want to do it, however you want to do it, so. All right, yep.
So when, when do you want, when do you want these emailed to?
So I would like to have these back by the end of this week.
By Friday, this week?
By Friday. Well, if I, yeah, Thursday or Friday. By the twelfth.
By, by the twelfth?
You know what, I'm not gonna be here Friday though, I'm not gonna be back, I'm taking Friday off.
By Thursday.
Thursday, I'm gone in the afternoon.
Thursday, kind of box.
Monday's a holiday, did you have it today by Thursday?
Thursday, what time?
Eight AM.
Eight AM?
By noon.
What time?
Noon on Thursday, the eleventh.
February eleventh?
Mm-hmm.
That's three days.
Can you do it in three days?
I gotta do it tonight then. I'll be out of town. Okay.
Well, I think, uh.
I've gotta get them to Nick.
Using the grid that she's got here and going through it, we could rate them, so, and we just, we need to email our top three to Luanne by, and so then we are meeting as a personnel committee on the twenty ninth.
At six thirty. And then, I will set up interviews for you, um, half hour, forty-five minutes each, what do you want? Twenty ninth is a Monday.
(coughing).
You want, so if you want them a half an hour, do you want the, do you want the appointments forty-five minutes apart then?
Yeah.
So, so just a little, okay.
Yeah.
So what's, what kind of ranking scales, everybody usually one to ten or one to five?
It doesn't matter because if you each use whatever you use on your applicants, your top three are gonna come out, whether you use one to. If you use one to five or she uses one to twenty, it isn't gonna matter.
Right.
If they're our own ranking skills, yeah, I get it.
Okay, on the, did, did you have a chance to look through the, uh, interview questions? Are there any of those that you want to change or take out? I guess the one I, I didn't, I don't know, I looked at number eight and.
Is that in the Google Doc then?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep. So I provided these from the list serve, and what these do, the ones through, the ones like this, tell you what to look for on them. They've got little things kind of pulling you in on what the answer should be. And I don't know if the questions were okay with you, if that's, which ones, even on the rating sheet on the back too.
I have to figure out where I left off and which Google Doc I clicked on and which.
Can you just go back to your agenda?
Yeah, I am.
So the city doesn't have any type of a, uh, skills test that they use for?
No, we haven't.
I was just wondering, as I reviewed this, if they.
Well, if that becomes an issue, you can certainly, you know, make them add up some numbers on a ten key and type something and. We had, I did it once where I, we called the person, just to see what they sounded like on the phone. And did that as part of the job interview process, for receptionist, because they were the first place, the people.
I've been in a, a interview process where they, and been announced to the applicant, sent them into a room and told them to write up a press release. So, that's a good, and they had however much time they needed to do that.
A letter to the resident, thought it passed the community, or, or to do something like that.
Something.
So I don't know if there were questions on here you wanted to eliminate, and questions that were from this one that you wanted to, I don't know, do you want to send those to me also? And then I will, I will, uh, comprise as a list, so if there's ones you want to delete, tell me which ones you want to delete.
All by Thursday.
Yep, well, these would, wouldn't have to be by Thursday. These could be later because I just have to contact the people by.
You just said the ones, the ones that are on Google Docs, right?
Yep.
The other wasn't.
This one isn't on there, after this one?
Yeah.
Is it?
It is at the bar.
It's there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I know, I kept thinking I had it something up to it, I didn't.
So they're both, so then, just so I get these by the, by the next council meeting, you could even, if you want me to copy them and give them to you, because we need these the night of the twenty ninth. I need to contact those people to set up the interviews, give them at least ten days ahead of time to let them know we're gonna interview them on the twenty ninth. That's why I want, I want by.
Okay, so questions by the next council meeting?
Yes, yep.
Um, how many questions do you want to have on this, this interview?
Thirty minute interviews and they take three minutes to answer questions, that's ten questions. Let me give it that way.
Put your top ten. Some of these are probably duplicates if you got two different.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so give Luanne your top ten.
Okay, top ten questions by next council meeting. Homework. Okay, so that's all we need than that, right?
Yeah.
So we got the date, twenty ninth.
Yep, six thirty.
And the top three to Luanne by noon Thursday, and top ten questions by, to Luanne by next council meeting. Okay, moving on then, um, where am I here?
And Lois and I will go through the questions too and come up with, do what we, she's already looked at them too. Okay, on to the next one.
Okay, so our application.
Mr. Mayor Councilmembers, we've used this, um, document in the past with developers when they've requested that the city sign the MPCA tour extension permit. Staff would sign the permit once the development agreement is signed and securities are in place. The developer does not intend to deposit securities with the city until closer, closer to the beginning of the construction season. So in order to keep the project moving, the developers would question, the city allows staff to sign the tour extension permit and submit it to the MPCA. Like I said, we've used it in the past, it keeps the process moving forward so they aren't waiting on the MPCA for the tour extension permit. We only had a problem with one developer that we ever, that prompted a city disagreement. We used it with Artman's after that and, um, others too. So I would recommend that we authorize a mayor's signature on the document.
Is it because of one developer we got this going, is that what you're saying?
He taught us a lot, he taught us a lot.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so, uh, this is just to keep the development going and so that things can get taken care of. Is there a motion to approve this request to, um, for the MPCA tour extension permit? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made second to approve this requ, any further discussion or questions?
What is this deposit securities when he gets closer to the?
It's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the construction project. And if you remember, it was in the development agreement, I think it was like seven hundred and some thousand dollars, and he has to provide securities to the city.
Okay, any other questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, five dot seven, authorization mayor's signature on Lexstar commercial non-exclusive showing agreement.
Mr. Mayor Councilmembers, the city has received of the attached commercial non-exclusive showing agreement for Lexstar Realty. This agreement is in reference to the listing of the fire department lot at three fourteen Ash Haven South. The agreement is exclusively for Casey's General Store only. This agreement also establishes a realtor's commi, compensation of six percent commission on the sale price of the lot. City attorney has reviewed the agreement and has approved of it. Staff's requesting the mayor's signature on the, um, commercial non-exclusive showing agreement.
So if I may just write this, it's just that this, uh, Lexstar is acting as the realty agents for us and for Casey's on this, just that one lot?
On that, oh, yes, yes.
Okay. And just for that particular for?
Yes, and just for that particular buyer also.
Right, for that particular, particular buyer, okay.
Yep.
How long is this agreement at for, for?
I think it's six months, if you agreed, I didn't, I, my copy went a little bit far. How many days?
Hundred eighty.
That's six months, right?
Yep, hundred eighty's.
So they are moving it through the process, um, as, uh, the last council packet you did have of, uh, emails from them that I have provided you, um, and they're, they're taking it through their process, it might take some time, but.
Okay.
They should have an answer and, and they get it through their process.
And (laughing).
They didn't give me a date and time.
No, no idea when that will take care of, okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve this, um, commercial non-exclusive showing agreement? For the, basically the fire department lot?
Do you know why he struck out the, uh, cooperating brokers, something? I don't know, but like I said, the city attorney has reviewed it because I suppose there isn't cooperating brokers, he's the only one. He's it, he's their, he's their realtor and our realtor, there's no cooperation.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve this, uh, agreement with Lexstar, Lexstar Realty. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on then to, um, discussion of possible purchase of property at four oh nine Shimcor. Now, before we get into discussion, I'll remind the council that our discussion at this part of meeting is just the merits of whether we have to pursue the purchase or not. No prices will be discussed, any pricing will be discussed in closed session after this, if we decide to go purchasing it that we feel it's worth. Purchasing, then we go ahead and go into closed session.
To negotiate.
Then we'll go into set price and to come up with a price.
So the price that's on here doesn't necessarily have to be?
Yeah, this price that's on here really has nothing to do with our discussion as far as, um, so basically our discussion should be, uh, centered around, do we want to pursue that property for possible city use? And that's kind of all predicated on selling another property too.
I think the discussion we had when we agreed to move forward with this is we wanted to try to make them both happen simultaneously so we didn't put ourselves a little locked to the fire department.
Right.
Not knowing how soon the other agreement's gonna come through is gonna make it a little bit difficult. And I think this is one of the last lots in that development that's big enough for the fire department.
Probably, and.
There's plenty of land, there's a fire department.
So that's, okay, um, so if we wish to proceed with discussing the financial part of it and putting forth an offer, then we need to just, uh, I guess make a motion that we, we'll discuss that in closed session, right? So I guess it's up to, up to the council to decide if it's worth, if, if that's our, our desire to move forward to make an offer. Okay?
I would make a motion to move forward with it.
Is there a second to that? I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move forward with, uh, making an offer on the property at, what is it, four oh nine Shimcor, four oh four Shimcor. Any further discussion or questions?
So where else would we put this, that's the fire department, if we don't buy that lot? Because this would, then we kind of narrow that, that spot down to probably it being the best spot.
That was.
If we're gonna wait until we need the fire building, it's gonna be several years. If you go toward Highway seven, which is the way the city is going, there's lots of land out that way. Lots of big lots. Lots of big lots out that way. That's just my thinking. And I've always been opposed to buying land in the industrial parks, or, you know, I just think we're, we're missing out on some, some other benefits that we could be having. And you just said a couple of minutes ago, you'd rather see a business in there than a tree. Well, I'd rather see a business in there than city. Just my line of thinking. So, that's where I'm at on it.
You know, I don't disagree with that. There's a lot of land as we move around, you know. There was three lots that were studied, under the fire department's study. This is one of the three, um, as you move out highway seven, you'd be placing it in the middle of a neighborhood versus an industrial park. Um, if we move to the wastewater plant, we're kinda moving away from highway seven, making it difficult to get back to highway seven. You know, I think my thought was, we had a lot, we're gonna let that go for commercial, we're gonna draw revenue off that. We can sit, take that money and put it aside in this lot and still have a lot for the fire department.
So you're saying you would want to discuss purchasing or wanna go move forward, bring it all for you?
Correct.
Okay, um, right, I, I agree with the highway seven thing. And there is, there is, there's probably a land law highway seven that would be available. I'm not sure what kind of price tag is on it. Um, location wise, I mean, that's, that's obviously the way the city's going to grow, I think, is pretty obvious out towards highway seven. But, uh, what kind of price is available, I, I don't know. So I, I would think, uh, the land next to Bob's repair there.
That's right.
Would be, would be available.
Okay, and that's not in, in the thing that's gonna be, I mean, it's right next to a commercial property.
Good question.
That's just where I'm at on it. I, we only have one industrial park. And if, if this person would have another offer, and we can get a business in there. That's just the way I'm thinking. I, I, I'm, you guys can vote the way you want, I guess, like, I'm not here to argue about it or, or try to convince anybody of anything different. I'm just telling you where I'm at.
Oh, I appreciate, that's kinda, I mean, I couldn't go either way on it. I just kinda like to hear what else you can, or, so, I appreciate that.
No, yep.
Well, if, if we're looking at, at some point, a new fire, fire, new fire station is, is definitely in the future, there's no doubt about that. That's, we're gonna give, we just have to walk through our present one with all the trucks in there, you know, that's not workable. Um, it is always nice to drive into a town to see a fire station along highway as far as one of the landmarks of the city. You know, or if, if it's an industrial park, it's not gonna be as visible. Now, is that the highest point of my priority? No, but it's, does make some sense. Uh, it's more, worse, to make more sense would be, it's along highways, it's along highway twenty-five, easy access.
Easy and easy out.
To both directions of town. I mean, you're going south, easily, going north easily. And. You know, that is, assuming that land is available, which I suppose needs to build at a price. And I have, other than knowing where the land is, I have no idea what kind of price they'd be, so, okay, and I've.
There's other land as you go down to more toward highway seven, so, you know. I, um, so.
And I don't, you know, I think that that would be a good location for it when it comes to highway access. I don't know if Mindat is gonna give you a ton of highway access.
That's probably true.
Yeah.
They tend to negotiate how far apart entrances can be.
Especially this area, yes.
So, you know.
And then you, then you have your infrastructure that's not there. You have parking lots that's not, and there's all that, everything.
Hopefully by the time we need the fire department, that will start to grow out there, move out there.
By going, you know, what you're proposing, I mean, you're really kinda tying the, the fire station really towards growth too.
Mm-hmm.
By doing that, because if the infra- infrastructure's not out, we're probably not gonna build out there. You know, so, and I think we would all agree that, uh, the addition of a, of a new fire station for us is obviously tied to growth.
Yeah. Well, and I think, you know, with firefighters coming from town and fire trucks trying to get into town, that's not an ideal entrance out there.
No, out here, no, no, out here.
Out, out there, you know, cause you're trying, everybody's trying to get around that one corner, in or out.
It's right around the industrial park?
When it comes time to, yeah. So, you know, the argument can be made, it's not the best site, but currently it's the only, only best site.
The only, yeah, right, still they.
It's only known site too, right?
Only known there right now, right.
You've got known site, absolutely, right?
Right.
I, I don't want, um, the fire department or a rod to be afraid that, oh, if we sell that corner lot, we have to buy a new one. I think that we, there are, there's plenty of land to buy around here.
I'm sorry, say that. And he drives the, drives the building, not the building driving the need.
So that puts us back at the question, do we wish to, was he was. Putting offering on this, on the four oh four Shimcor? Our discussion of price itself would all be in closed session.
Did you raise me the motion?
We have, you have a motion, so.
We have a motion, yes, that's right, I had a second.
And you seconded it?
Yeah, I seconded, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Call it.
Okay, um, any further discussion or questions? Yeah, now they call the motion, okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with, uh, putting offering on the property at four oh four Shimcor. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, uh, you know, other businesses, any, anything else? Okay, council reports, any council reports?
I'm still kinda talking to people in our neighborhood about the internet service and there's still a lot of frustration out there. Um, and those people switched over to a different provider here in town, so it's, kind of, been in contact with the telecom still a little bit. And they're still hoping, and, uh, still end of March, I think, is, is what they're saying for some kind of change, but, so that still is.
What kind of change are they talking about?
Uh, they're putting in a new router to, um, hopefully increase speeds and, and increase development, cause that's, that's an infrastructure issue, so.
Okay, so that would just affect, and just affect your region?
That's, it sounds like the, the problem potentially is majority, isn't it, isn't?
That's pretty true.
Yeah, in our area, yeah, specifically, so.
Okay.
I don't have an issue, do you?
I don't have an issue, actually, I'm contemplating going back to Frontier, DSL, because it's. Uh, well, actually, I drop the speed, but I think DSL, from what I'm, my experience, has been it's, it's a little more dedicated. So even if you drop speed, it's a dedicated line in a sense, and so, um, I'm looking at costs.
Yeah, it's costs is, apparently they, they pick up modems at the, at the gas station here in town, and there's a lot of people dropping out modems here. So hopefully they can get that problem fixed.
So people are switching over to, I mean, only other ballgame is from here.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what's the voiceover thing that?
That's your phone.
It's your phone.
Phone service.
Well, you have to have the internet.
Do you have that?
Yeah, it has internet, it's that.
Exactly, yeah. Did we, were able to contact Jaguar about, pay any interest?
I did, I did, and there, I haven't heard back from them, but we're still working, but, um.
It's just, it's funny how the more and more people are starting to talk about it, and a lot of people are having problems in our area, so, hopefully they get the fixing, so.
I may, I mean, it's, it's worked all the time, I just, uh, I'm looking for what the service I'm getting. I probably save myself twenty bucks a month going to Frontier and get the same quality of service, so that's why I'm gonna switch. I think I'm gonna switch.
Good luck with it, hard, good luck with it.
(laugh).
Ours is a dollar lot, we got Frontier.
Well.
I do, and I don't have any phone over there.
With Frontier?
You don't, okay, that's good to hear. I, um.
One's in a blue, and you gotta reset, you know, but that's.
Well, that should do it, that I do with, 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 with new telecom too. They actually want you to reset your router, but every once in a month, or once a week anyhow, so, probably a good idea, so. Okay, well, okay, uh, anything else? Okay, are you, were turning your temperature up in here? Thank you. Okay, then, uh, this meeting will be, uh, closed per Minnesota statute thirteen D. Ottawa fight to discuss, to discuss proposed terms and conditions for purchase of property at four oh nine Shimcor.